For joining early. So that we can hear from our three select persons this evening before we move into the level set. So calling the meeting to order, again, thanking everyone for joining us a half an hour earlier, the members, the public and the select persons. And I would ask that Prue call the roll, please.
Okay. Marlene Batista?
Here.
Chris Brogan?
Here.
Brian Cafarelli?
I'm here.
Jay Gross?
Here.
Pam Iacono?
Here.
John Matola?
Here.
And John Wen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could just do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, you're muted.
Brian, we can't hear you. Can't hear you. Sorry, I, my audio was just, it just kicked me out, so I had to sign back in.
We can hear you, Nancy, thanks.
Thank you.
This is Marlene.
Hi.
Hi.
Is that back?
There you go.
Yes, you're back, Brian, but we missed everything that you said, so start over, please.
Okay. Well, I don't know what I did when I picked it up for the pledge, so just, I was saying that item three on the agenda is the informational item about the public email comments that have been coming into our CRC@fairfieldct.org email address. Thank you for all those. They are included in the backup up to, I think, noon today, I believe, and they have been incorporated into the tracking chart that has been provided as well. And then I want to just move right along to agenda item number four, so that we can hear from our select persons. I know in particular, Selectwoman Lefkowitz has a time constraint, and congratulations are in order to her daughter's soccer team for advancing, and I understand that she is playing tonight, so we wish her well. So without further ado, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm seeing hands again, and so, so without further ado.
That was just a woo-woo-woo for advancing.
Oh, good, Jay, yeah. Woo-woo.
I did also want to mention, this is Marlene Batista, that this is also being broadcast live right now on Fair TV.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Marlene, and thank you to Fair TV for coordinating that. So, Selectwoman Lefkowitz, we would like to turn the floor over to you, to hear from you about your thoughts on town government as it relates to our work here this evening.
Well, thank you very much, and I'd like to echo the thanks, and congratulations to all of you. First of all, as I said to Brian privately, you're doing yeoman's work, and I commend this committee for the thoughtful approach so far that you've taken as a group in hearing input from the town, and I want to thank you for accommodating the early time. In fact, both Ward and Ludlow women's soccer teams have advanced to the state semifinals, so it's an exciting time for Fairfield women's soccer. And to get right to it, I have spent a lot of time really reading and rereading the charter to formulate some thoughts. I have some overarching philosophical questions, rhetorical questions, that I hope you'll consider as you're doing this work, some specifics, things that I think are worth looking at, and really, some insights that I hope you will at least question and stretch and think about, not because I necessarily have an answer or preferred or desired outcome, but I hope that there are things that you will look at, and I looked at the grid, and much of what I'm saying is really just a repeat of some things that have already been said, but I'll get right to it. Some general comments, unless anyone needs me to stop before I continue.
Please proceed.
Okay, so generally, the question, the rhetorical question I first have is, does this charter reflect who we are, where we're going, the vision of who we want to be? Is it future-facing? Is it really taking some of what we know from our past practices and moving us forward in a way that we feel is reflective of who we are and who we want to be? Does this document actually reflect how we function? And again, these are just some of the things I thought about as I was reading them, because I think that those are important questions to filter through when we're asking, as a community, what should remain. I do think that it is not very user-friendly. It's very clunky. There's a lot of legalese, and I appreciate that it is, in fact, a legal document, but it's also one that should become more accessible to the layperson in the community. And again, is that through referencing state statute? Is it cross-referencing? Is there an index that is used throughout? Is there a term, glossary terms? Is there kind of interpretations? You know, this is the legalese, but this is what this means. I think that there's a place for some sort of a preamble, a vision statement referring to what I said earlier about the statement of our principles. I would love, as I said in an earlier meeting, to have all of this work looked at through a lens of not just equity and inclusion, but what I would add to that is economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, inclusion, diversity. Are the clauses, are the sections in the ordinance, in the charter, being looked at through that lens? I think that, for me, extracting as much of the politics out of running our town would be appropriate. I would love to see, for instance, a discussion, again, I know this is not a new idea, but I would like to hear about, would like to have a more robust discussion about switching to a town council. I think a three-person board of selectmen is not an effective executive, it's not functioning as effectively as it could. I think merging the board of finance with the board of selectmen, making more of a town council-type structure, talking about a town manager, all of those things are things I think we should be considering and looking at. I like the idea of having a representative body. Does it need to be 40? I don't know. I do think that it's a very political endeavor, and if there's a way to change that, if we keep that structure through petition, that's something that I'm interested in learning more about. A lot of the language in here, something I had questioned, and Steve, this is what I called you about, in terms of how we, not police it, but how oversight for things, are some, is some of this just symbolic law? Is it enforceable? I think we should take out things that are either not enforceable and symbolic or superfluous. And again, I'm not getting into specifics here, but some of it seemed to me that if it's language or laws that we can't really do anything about, does it have a place in the charter? Making it gender-neutral, for instance, select person, select men is throughout, and I know I've been referred to as selectwoman, and we talk about Brenda being the first selectwoman as is right, but per the charter, it's not, that's not actually correct, so I think we need to address some of that. In the health department, for instance, it says, and this isn't necessarily a question of gender, but that the person should be a physician. Maybe it can be an APRN. Do we need that? So I think we should be looking at all of the job descriptions across the board and say, okay, where is it gender-neutral? Does it have to be this specific town seal? I'm not sure if I mentioned that. I'm just going through all of my notes, so I'm running down. So I think we should be looking at the town seal. Are we still a town at 62,000? That's something I think we should talk about. I know people really like the nature and the characteristic of that, but what would it mean if we became a city? Looking at the various job descriptions, as it relates to the form of government and the board of selectmen, the first selectman has a staff which has increased by 25% in terms of salary over the last few years, and if it is something that is essential to the functioning of that office, then is it worth putting in the charter with specific roles and responsibilities and being mandated? So, again, not necessarily forming an opinion, but just saying we should be looking at that. I had said merging board of, any questions so far? Because I feel like, I'm sorry, I'm just going on a run-on here. Anyone want anything clarified? I have a few more thoughts.
Okay, I don't have any questions at this point. It would be probably helpful if you could finish your thoughts, and then we could open it up to questions, but if you, you know, are you able to do that?
Yeah, and certainly, I have this in writing. As I had said, I was hesitant to put it in writing without context, because
Sure.
a lot of this, as I said, is really just more something I think we should consider and talk about. I didn't come in with necessarily a specific point of view, with some exception.
I understand.
Is there something that we can codify in the charter to make the budget process more inclusive? One thing I had considered was merging, as I said earlier, the board of finance with the board of selectmen, and maybe, and more specifically, I'm thinking about the role that the budget plays in, with those two bodies, and how we can be more efficient with that. It's throughout the charter, two-state statute, and when you don't really know what it is, it's confusing. Town attorney.
Did I, did we lose her a little bit, or no?
Hello?
Okay, you just, you dropped off a town attorney.
Yeah, it's, I've noticed this over both administrations. It's not, it's not a reflection of one specific administration doing one thing, so it's not a criticism. I just think, I would like to see that, the politics of that higher, because taken out, and again, same with the assistant attorneys, is that something that needs to be there? The tree warden, we had this issue yesterday, where he comes before the board of selectmen every year. It feels clumsy. One very specific thing I'd love to see is the inclusion of a diversity, equity, the addition of a diversity, equity and inclusion officer, and a correlating permanent task force on equity and inclusion. Just a few more points.
Okay.
Is there anything in the town code that is important enough to be put in the charter? I don't know if that's something for this committee, but I don't know if you'll look at the code, but is there a way to either in reverse, something that no longer really should be in the charter, and maybe it's more appropriate as an ordinance? I'm specifically thinking about the standards of conduct, having a code of ethics. Are those appropriate for a charter, or are those better served in a code? And then, finally, the boards and commissions. I would be interested to see about, like Greenwich has the system where the RTM does most of that appointing, and again, it takes some of the politics out of the process. We should look at the term limits. We should look at what it means to be balanced in those, on those different, on those different boards and commissions. And again, I'm happy to send these in note form, but those are kind of the top-level ideas that I wanted to share. Questions, thoughts?
Well, thank you, and if you wouldn't mind sharing them, I've taken notes, and I'm sure everyone else has, but if you wouldn't mind sharing the writing, that would be helpful. Again, we are, tonight, we're in the process of kind of reviewing all the comments that have come in to kind of organize the thoughts and look, and make a list and prioritize of what the committee's going to review over the next several months, so.
It was my vote to add my voice, to add my voice to the grid
Yeah, yeah.
in a list form, and then as you guys dive deeper into the process, you know, be participatory where it's impactful, or where I might, you know, have more of an opinion. But as I said, tonight, I just wanted to kind of do the brain dump of some of the things that I had been thinking, both sublime and ridiculous, big picture, and just share them with you.
Perfect, and I really do appreciate you putting that together. I think Attorney Bedneck has something to offer.
It's not a substance of questions, more for clarification. Madam Selectwoman, when you mentioned term limits, I assume you're talking about term limits for boards and commissions, not for elected officials?
I would actually say thank you for that question, because I think we need to be looking at all of it, frankly. Six years is a lot to be serving in an elected position, a lot changes. I don't know where I would land after a robust discussion on it. It just, my immediate thinking, and boards and commissions, same. I mean, is it that they're serving six years, and then they can serve indefinitely? Some are two terms, some are four terms. I just think that we need to be looking kind of across the board at what that means.
The reason I raise the question is you really can't do it in Connecticut for elected officials. It is permitted for appointed officials, and I wanted to make sure that I understand the dichotomy, so.
Okay. So, I say, yes, and, I mean, if we're prohibited by state statute, then there's our answer, but, you know, where it's appointed and where we can do that, then
All right.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the commission have questions for Selectwoman Lefkowitz? I don't know if I see everyone, so I don't see you.
While you are mulling this over, if I could leave you with my four most highlighted important points.
That'd be great.
It would be the inclusion of a diversity, equity, and the addition of a diversity, equity and inclusion officer at the staff level
Okay.
and a correlating commission, permanent commission on racial equity and inclusion and justice. And I would say, as I said at the top line, just the ideals of who we are, our value system, and making sure we are looking at whatever we change and codify, that it is through a lens of economic, environmental sustainability, equity, inclusion, and so And that it becomes really a document that the community can really digest and understand.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't see anyone raise their, oh, I've got Mr. Wen as a question.
Yes, thank you. Nancy, very thoughtful and thorough review of a number of topics that I think have come up in the emails, and I think as part of our discussion review. The one topic you mentioned, diversity and equity officer, are you advocating for an individual, a headcount, a body, or just that someone has been assigned responsibility for being contemplative and thoughtful about that topic of diversity and equity?
Thank you, John, for asking that. It's nice to see you. Yes, I'm asking for a headcount, additional person.
Okay, thank you.
The acronym DEI officer is something that maybe you will become more familiar with, that has become more, you're seeing it more in both in the public and the private sector.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thanks again for taking the time to join us this evening, and good luck again to your daughter and the entire Fairfield women's soccer teams.
Thank you, and thank you again for accommodating the timing, and as I said, I'm not on camera because of, I'm sitting in a parking lot, but I really appreciate all of you and continued success with your work. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, next, we're going to move to Selectman Flynn, who has joined us. Thank you for being here, and good evening, and the floor is now yours to share your thoughts on the operation of government as it relates to the charter. You're on mute, Tom, so I'm speaking for someone who has audio problems every time.
You would think I would know by this point.
No, I'm the worst.
Hey, Brian, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everybody, for all your work to date. As a little bit of background, I'm currently completing or just completing two years on the board of selectmen, following 14 years on the board of finance, so that colors the prism through which I look at town government and the roles and responsibilities, as I throw that out there. I've also worked at the state level on the Connecticut Green Bank, and on the board level at various companies and private not-for-profits such as Beardsley Zoo. The things I've labeled out, about eight points here, that I think, and they're broad in scope, because I want to let you do the heavy lifting here, and I think since this commission will provide their recommendations to our board, and then we'll go back and forth, I don't want to gild the lily too much, but rather point some direction that I think is important, based on the experience that I've had operating within town government for the past 16 years. The first thing I'd say is, and what I think is of the utmost importance, and it already came out a little bit in the earlier discussion, is consistency with state laws. I think we can point to numerous examples within the last number of years where the existing charter had too much ambiguity in it, or was actually in conflict with the state regulations. So I think making sure we stay within that blueprint will save us a lot of time, a lot of angst, and a lot of legal fees in the future. The second thing is, I've heard a lot of discussion about the form of town government, and my colleague Nancy brought it up earlier this evening. I am not one that is sold on changing a town government. That does not mean that I am against it, nor for it, I'm just not sold, and I wonder if we might throw the baby out with the bathwater if we go down that road. What I would like to see us do, and the opportunity that I don't want to be missed, is if there is going to be a recommendation to review another form of government, don't presume that's going to pass on a ballot. And if it doesn't pass, what I want to make sure, if it does come up, what I want to make sure is we address some of the inherent inefficiencies within the current system of town government, which come down to really definitions of roles and responsibilities, and clearer definitions of what process should be. And I'll give some examples on that. The first example is our budget process. We found out probably four years ago now that the way we were operating the budget process with joint committee hearings between the board of selectmen and board of finance, while more efficient, was in conflict with the charter. I would encourage this board to look at how we can make that official part of that budget process more flexible and more efficient between the three town bodies, then eventually four, if you want to count, starting with the board of education, to the board of selectmen, to the board of finance, to the RTM. I think that process has actually worked well, as evidenced by our AAA credit rating and the financial stability of the town over some 300 and some odd years, but I think it could be more efficient. And I think certainly the department heads believe that, and certainly the administration believes that, based on the numbers of meetings and hearings they need to go through, so review of that process, I think, is very important. The other item would be really nailing down the definitions of the roles and responsibilities. The one that immediately comes to mind, that was more recent, relates to the board of finance, and it relates to their role in setting the system of assessments. And they really talk about whether that is actually speaking of a computer system, or actually managing or helping to manage the assessment process, how they go about that. So a clarification of even the board of finances' role when it comes to assessments, when it comes to, or managing the assessment process, when it comes to the internal audit, and the appointment of the internal auditor, and the report-outs of the internal auditors to the board of finance, I think that is all very important, and a more classic definition there, or specific definition, that takes into account state statute, I think, is very important. When it comes to the board of selectmen, I think their role in the administration of the town on a day-to-day basis, and I'm not advocating for an increased role there, I'm not taking a position, but really a clarification of what that role is. We, Nancy and I, get a myriad of emails related to the town position on certain things that, quite frankly, is not within our role or responsibility or purview such that it is. So we either ought to state that, or we ought to clarify what that might be. That's also true, there's been some conflict in years past related to the board of selectmen's role on salary increases for department heads. Organization of government, and whether when an organization or reorganization of government takes place, should the board of selectmen have a role? And I think that should just be specifically addressed as that part of town statute, of town government. My concern is, again, if we get wrapped up in saying we should abandon this form of government and go to another form of government, that we don't address some of the issues that are already inherent in this form of government, should it be kept through an election cycle, through the electorate? I think this form of government has served the town well for a long period of time, but I would agree it could be more efficient. One other item that I think Mrs. Iacono is very well-versed in this, and I think members, or rather, the leaders of the town political parties are very well-versed, in the ability to get candidates for the RTM, is the RTM, should it be kept of the appropriate size? I have seen in my 16 years where the RTM, you used to have a lot more people involved, a lot more returning people involved in the RTM, that had that breadth of history of the town, and in recent years, it's been tough to find people to run for the RTM in certain districts and certain areas of town. How do we do that? Is a smaller RTM the way to go? Again, I'm not advocating, I'm just stating that that's certainly an area that should be looked at and reviewed. Some of the department heads, I would look at the qualifications required for those positions and make sure in 2022 that those qualifications make sense. And I would remember that we have technical staff that the town employs, and is it is necessary for certain department heads to have specific degrees or credentials, rather than the experience in running departments or running functions? And that's really a philosophical question. If we employ a bunch of CPAs, does the CFO need to be a CPA? If we employ a bunch of engineers, does the head of DPW need to be an engineer? Again, I think that's something that should be open for discussion, and part of that should be real practical, which is the town's ability to attract talented people that wants those positions. And does our definition or our qualification requirements for those positions preclude us from getting the right people or good people in the future for those positions? I would also look at our systems of boards and commissions across town. Do we have the right number of them? Do they have the right scope of responsibility? It's interesting, in many instances, we give the board of finance responsibility over the finances of the town, but yet they get no say over how we generate revenue for the town, other than the tax burden. They don't get any say over what fees are we charging, what are we doing market rate for these fees. Those are left to the individual boards and commissions. Is that appropriate? The same thing is, we say they have control over The same thing is, we say they have control over, or a big say, I shouldn't say control, over the budget of the town, but yet they're nowhere involved in contract negotiations, which by far and large, my apologies, my dog likes that comment. By and large, the number one expense is the salaries and benefits paid to our employees. Again, that could be a conflict with state statute. I have been told repeatedly that it is, but I have never checked it myself. So that's something that I would just check because we should use that board's expertise where we can. So those are really the items that I would focus on should I be on the committee at this point in time. I'm sure there are others. I'm sure others will pop into my head. I in no way want to steer this committee in one way or another. I want you to independently do your work and come back so that I can be in a position to evaluate it objectively. My goal here was to just give you my observations after being involved in 16 years and some real-world examples of some of the conflicts that I've seen in the last couple of charters that we've had during my time on these boards and commissions. And I'm happy to provide that counsel or insight whenever you think it's appropriate during your deliberations. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you and take any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you. And yes, that's exactly what we were looking for and definitely, and thanks for your service on those 16 years. Certainly a lot of insight and, you know, knowledge there that we can draw upon and some great points for us to consider going into this process tonight. I don't have any specific questions on what you just spoke about, but I'll open it up to other members of the commission to see. And it looks like Mr. Gross has a comment.
Sure. Hello, Mr. Gross.
Hi, Selectman Flynn. Yes, thank you very much for your comments. I do have a follow-up on two of the things, two of the points. The first is just the trade-off, and it is a bit of a dilemma, right? When you look at technical skill versus managerial skill.
Correct.
Right. So if there's a primer or if there's a source that you've seen in the town or elsewhere that you think we would benefit as a guiding, you know, some guardrails? Or I haven't seen others make those trade-offs, I think that's an excellent debate topic that would drive clarity around a lot of the other questions. So if there's anything you're familiar with that could help us with that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Gross, thanks for the comment back. On the town side, absolutely not. I haven't seen anything in government. It's a lot of the work that I do in building out back office functions in corporations, which is part of my professional responsibility. And I've found that it's, you know, very important to get a solid general manager above the functions that can keep the wheels going and has an honest understanding or solid understanding, but they don't need to be the technical experts. You know, an example of that in an accounting and a finance function, you typically have a controller that's a CPA or close to that, or a managerial accountant, depending on the business. And you have a tax person who is, you know, well-versed in tax, and they're two very, very different things, very different disciplines. And I would say it's probably the same, I've seen it the same in many other operating departments, but for example, I've never run a DPW department. So that'd be something that you'd want to talk to the head of DPW about. But I think to just come out with a blanket statement and say that your chief financial officer, let's say, needs to be an MBA, I don't know that that's appropriate, or that they need to be a CFA, or that they need to be a CPA. It really depends on how you're going to staff the department and the mix of expertise you're going to have below that person and allow that person to manage it. And again, I only use that as an example, given that's my area of expertise.
Okay, thank you. My second point was, or second point of clarification, was your comment about boards and commissions.
Yeah.
And there's two, I guess, topics in that. One is the overlap. And the second is the fact that essentially the way the roles and responsibilities are written today, it's almost like those organizations are satellite government.
Yes.
Okay. So there's all these different executive roles without necessarily a defined, and the term I've used in the past is, you know, control and command kind of a structure. So are you advocating for a tighter, have a tighter ability for command and control that's consistent across all the boards and commissions so that they all kind of work together in order to accomplish an overall mission? Because today, there's not necessarily that coordinated, you don't have that ability to coordinate those programs across all the diverse boards that need to cooperate.
That's 100% accurate in my experience. A couple of real-world examples of that that I've seen. And I'm not going to use specific border commission because my intent here, again, is not to steer the conversation, nor is it to publicly chastise. That's not what I'm trying to do. We've had numerous instances throughout my years where a border commission has come and said, we want to spend X amount on these projects, right? Which is a significant amount of money. And we're not talking about, let's say, the fire department or the police department, something where public safety, you're talking about other areas of government. And you sit there and you say, hey, that's great, that's nice. Where are we going to get the return on that, right? Where are we gonna, what are we gonna do? What's that gonna do to fees? What's that gonna do to revenue? And they'll sit there and say, well, we can't raise fees, we can't raise revenue, this is just what we need to do, right? And they have control over whether they raise the revenue or not. The budget process does not have control over the fees that are charged by these boards or commission. So it puts you in this catch-22 where you can understand that they might need to make the expense, but you have no control over whether they can raise the fee, raise the revenue. And that's a significant amount of frustration that comes in. You can, you know, do a sense of the body motion, you can do whatever, but at the end of the day, that command and control rests with that board of commission. And you can sit there and say, okay, we'll fund it. Mr. Mottola knows this because he's been on that board. You can fund it, but there's no guarantee that they're going to raise the rates they charge for that service. So there's no guarantee that you're ever going to get that increase in revenue based on the expenditure that you make. And that's a tough position to be put in when you're approving the budget process. The other thing, and I want to give Mrs. Kupchak a lot of credit for looking at this, making some decisions on this, but I'll give you a very real-world example that's very recent. And this goes to department roles and responsibilities, not just committees. Park and Recreation was getting a lot of phone calls about the fields and the shape of the fields around town. It's been a hot topic for the last year and rightly so because our fields are in some difficult shape. Park and Recreation, though, wasn't responsible for the upkeep of the fields. They were the client of DPW. And DPW really controlled the field crews, and not that they weren't working in concert with Park and Recreation, but it was, you had this bifurcated system of who was being held accountable and who was actually being held responsible. And, you know, I'm a big guy for having, you know, accountability and responsibility within the same area. And thankfully, Brenda and her team made the decision to move some of the responsibility for the fields over directly under the control of Park and Recreation because it's really not a fair position to be in if that wasn't the case. I think we have that, based on my experience, across town government. And I think you, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that wasn't too wordy.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Flynn? John?
Thanks, Selectman Flynn. John Winn here.
Hey, Mr. Winn, how are you?
Very good, thank you. I had a follow-up question on one or two items that a little bit touched upon what you were speaking about, but that have come up in some other comments and thoughts submitted by members in the public, members of other boards. You mentioned that you weren't sold on a change to town government. So to not presume that a change would happen, but contemplate other changes that might make our government, existing governance process, more effective, more efficient, higher impact, better controlled and managed risks, et cetera. The role of a three-person Board of Selectmen, can you provide some of your perspective, both having served on the Board of Finance and on the Board of Selectmen now, and then also being familiar with other towns that are along the coast here in Connecticut? What you've seen as to what might be an effective, you know, thought to consider with that?
I think the Board of Selectmen, I think, Mr. Winn, what I'm saying is, and I don't want to guide this conversation, not allow you guys to do your work. What I'm saying is, the roles and responsibilities of, I'll stick with the big four for right now. The Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the RTM, and the Board of Education. Board of Education obviously has their own rules and responsibilities based on the Department of Education and all that. So you could look at the big three, as it were. I think they could be more clearly defined within our charter because sometimes the Board of Selectmen, you don't know what requires a vote, or at least I don't, and what doesn't. Mrs. Kupchak was put in a position over the last two years because of significant events, whether it be the fill pile or whether it be COVID, to make a lot of executive-level decisions, right? She did a great job managing through both those situations, and I'm just talking honestly. That's not a political statement. She's just done yeoman's work or yeowoman's work on doing that. But what was our area of responsibility, right? It was kind of ill-defined. Where we're, when we did the mask mandate, the question I had, it was never put to a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I'm not saying it should have been. I'm saying if it was more clearly defined what our roles and responsibilities were, we would know. And that's one of the examples. You know, when there's, this goes back to the Tetra administration talking about department head salaries. Who does department head reviews? Certainly the executive on the ground who deals with them on a day-to-day basis bears the burden of doing those reviews. Does the Board of Selectmen have a role to play in what those salaries should be, setting those salaries and moving along? How about benefit negotiations and things like that? What are our roles related to those situations? So those are the type of things. I think the Board of Selectmen, due to their unique, particularly in ours, our skill sets, which we all come from a variety of different skill sets, and I think they have for the past several boards of Selectmen, I think they could be utilized more specifically. I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. Thanks. One thing we didn't ask, and we asked Selectwoman Lefkowitz, that if she had her notes memorialized, if she could provide that, I was curious if you have some of your thoughts, if you'd be able to provide that. And I mean, you always have the video, so I mean, there's always the benefit of having the session here on recorded, so.
Yeah, I have some bullet points that I can jot down and forward to Brian, and he can share. I guess, you know, my takeaway is, on some of this, is just I know the form of government has been a hot button of discussion, both in public as well as, I presume, you know, in your meetings and things. I would just say, the form of government we have can be made more efficient. And even if you go about recommending a different form of government in your work and efforts, I would suggest that you need to dual-track that and say, if we stay with the existing form of government, how do we make it more efficient? How do we make it, provide more clarity? And I think that's, I think that'd be paramount and be very useful in the future for either direction that it goes.
So just to follow up with one additional point on that topic. Certainly efficiency and effectiveness and inclusiveness and access to all objectives of governance. Risk management is another key one, and the topic of risk management in many varieties have come up in the past several years. One of the questions of discussion that your thoughts would be helpful on is the role of the town attorney in providing risk management for the town versus not necessarily just providing legal advice and risk management for the first select person. And how roles and responsibilities might be defined that would help achieve clarity in better executing that risk management function?
Yeah. Is there a question in there, John?
Is that the way that you would approach, you know, addressing the objective of better risk management as part of a governance evaluation or realignment?
Yeah. So most certainly, and I'm going to, you know, this is not meant towards Mr. Baldwin at all, who I have a very good working relationship with. But most certainly during my tenure of 16 years, I have seen several instances where the town attorney, I think, has forgotten what their ultimate role is, which is representing the town, and it's been more representing the first select man or person. And I think, yes, it's, most assuredly, the town attorney plays a significant role in managing risk for the town. Now, quite frankly, at one point, all the insurance and the risk management was under human resources. If Mr. Baldwin is on the phone, which I think he's on a lot of these, he is, I see his name there, maybe he can speak to that right now and who the risk manager, in terms of insurance, reports to right now. But I do think a further emphasis on the fact that the town attorney does represent that town is appropriate. And I must say, my experience with Mr. Baldwin has been that way. So again, I'm not trying to make that personal in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I don't see anybody. I think I have everyone on my monitor here, too. So with that, I would like to thank you again for joining us this evening and sharing those thoughts. And if you did have something, those bullet points that you wanted to share, you can send to the CRC email would be great, just so that everyone has them and we can make sure that they're incorporated into the tracking grid as well.
Look, I thank you for the time tonight. I look forward to future discussions like this. Please feel free to ask me back at any point during your process. And I look forward to the conclusion of your work and your presentation to our body.
Okay, great.
At a future date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next up is the first select woman, Brenda Kupchak. And we need to, there we go.
Can everyone hear me okay?
You got it, yes. How are you?
Very good. I'm well, Mr. Chairman. And before I begin, I just want to thank all of the members for taking on this responsibility. I know it is, it's not an easy one, and it comes with a lot of controversy and input and hard work. I mean, the charter is our legal document that manages our town, and it is a serious situation. And I just really genuinely want to thank each of you for giving this time to our community because it's important. So thank you. I've jotted down a bunch of bullet points, and then I'll, I can expand later. But I just want to say that when I was the first elected into office, in my first State of the Town address two years ago, I announced I would open up the charter because it had been over 15 years since we have done that. And I know, according to our state statute, we need to do that approximately every 10 years. This process, I think, is exciting for our town, and we are making history. I think it should be taken seriously and professionally. Our town was established in 1639, and the charter has been guiding us each and all of those years. Ultimately, the recommendations made by the commission and approved by the Board of Selectmen will be on the ballot for residents to decide whether they are the right steps forward for our community. forward for our community. I want to first start to address some of the political rumors that, that my proposing that we impanel the Charter Revision Commission was my intent to radically change our town government and turn Fairfield into a city. I am a third-generation Fairfielder. I love Fairfield, and I do not want to change Fairfield into a city. We have a town, and there's a lot of charm to our town. Yes, we're very big, but I don't think we should become a city. Of course, we have changed a great deal over the last few decades, we are now the 11th largest municipality in the state, we have over 61,000 residents, and I think that simply means we make, we need to make some adjustments to accommodate our growth. Civic engagement and volunteerism are the fundamental components of how Fairfield maintains its small-town feel in our community. I am here tonight to address the Commission with some of my genuine concerns after having served as First Selectwoman for the last two years. So I'm gonna put, break them out into certain areas that I have put together, so I just want to first start off with the budget. The Town Administration basically starts this process in October and November. We start meeting with department heads and working with them throughout to February, where I start making presentations to the Board of Selectmen. Now, that typically is a three-day process, it's nine in the morning till five in the afternoon, the two, well, the two that I did so far, and then you have one full day for the Board of Education. And then in March, the Board of Finance takes up the budget, and then the RTM takes it over, and their final meeting is at the end of May. So as you can see, and as Selectman Flynn alluded to, it's a very long budget process, and there are tremendous amount of meetings. And actually, I, I think it's something that, that Commission should look at, because I know Selectman Flynn mentioned this about the joint meetings, but my understanding is that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance can hold joint meetings if they both agree. And I think it would ma, make it a lot more efficient. I think there just needs to be a way to streamline the process that does not require these multiple presentations throughout the different various boards and commissions. Streamline the budget process without compromising any checks and balances, I'd like, I'd like the Commission to look at other towns and see what they do, without sacrificing those proper checks and balances. The more time our department heads spend on the budget process, and are in budget hearings, and all, throughout all hours of the night, the less time they have to spend focus on serving the residents of our town, which does concern me. It's not efficient, and frankly, it's not transparent for our residents, who would have to tune in to so many meetings, approximately 68 hours of them, between the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, to actually know what's going on. Boards and Commissions. Fairfield is lucky to have so many independent boards and commissions filled with resident volunteers who work on behalf of our community. We have over 300 people, serving on 55 boards, so that's, that's a significant amount of people. And maybe the Charter Commission should look a little bit about who, what commissions sort of oversee which departments, and how that works, and if it's efficient or not. Department Heads and Staffing, looking at the terms and reappointments of department heads, as Selectwoman Lefkowitz mentioned earlier, I think we need some more clarity there, and generally speaking, I need, it needs, I think, some clarifications in our Charter, and as she mentioned about the tree warden, I asked our tree warden if he would ask the state, what is the length of time, because to have to reappoint the tree warden every year, who's actually a unionized employee of our town, seems a little strange. What else do I have? Oh, in a town of 61,000 people, I feel that the first select person's office needs to be properly staffed, and as you, those of you who may have remembered, when I first came in, I was bold enough to go before the Board of Finance and ask, two weeks into office, for some transfers of funds, so that I could hire a CAO. I had researched other towns, I saw how they staffed their front offices, and frankly, I knew that I was walking into a very large situation with the fill pile, and not just the fill pile, but obviously, a town of 61,000 people has extraordinary needs, and there are so many things that come across my office on any given day. So having extra staff to be able to meet the needs of our residents, I think, is very important, and I did read, read Commissioner Metola's email regarding having the Chief of Staff be a permanent position, and I 100% agree with that, and that has been back and forth over the years, I think it is vitally important. We are not a small town, we are a very big town, and we do need staff to be able to accommodate those needs. Where am I? I also think that the Chief Administrative Officer that I mentioned earlier, that I had asked for from the Board of Finance, currently, that's Tom Bremer, but this is something that will go through to the future, regardless of who's sitting in the, the CEO position of our town. Having the extra staff, there is so many, many things, and it's hard to sort of convey in a quick sort of synopsis, but it, it's extraordinary. We have a lot of things happening, and if to do them right, and to have careful focus on each of the things that we are doing, we need people paying close attention. Reading, I mean, the reams of documents that need to be read on any given day, to be able to report back and to make decisions, it's just not physically possible for one single person, or even two people. I will go to government. As I alluded to earlier, I believe in checks and balances and the balance of power. I do however, I do however, believe our form of government is somewhat antiquated, and could be much more efficient, and I would love for the, the Commission to look, look into that. I know I, I heard that you were talking about having some additional people come in from around the state to talk about how their forms are working, what do they do, how do they do it? Because I think we can be more efficient in our, in our form of government and how we work. How exactly? That's up to you guys. I would hope that you would look at, like I said, from other towns, to see if they're more agile, do they result in a higher level of service to our residents? And I believe that the Board of Finance and RTM both play important roles in our town governance, but as with anything, I think the Commission can find ways to approve the process we currently have. And lastly, I know I've, I've been heard saying this before, and I'll say it again, I'm not sure why the, the town seal needs to be in the Charter, why it's designated that way, but I have to say that I don't believe that our current town Charter is an accurate description of our town's history. And so I think that's something that, that the Commission should review and look at, because to be able to just change the seal, you have to literally open up the Charter, so I think that's something that the Commission should look at, and I will open it up for questions.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for those thoughts, and I would ask if any members of the Commission have any questions for the First Selectwoman. Mr. Metola?
Thank you, and thank you, Brenda. Just to clarify, so do you think that the CAO position should be a Charter position? Just so I understand that?
I do, John.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I had.
Are there any other questions from the, the Commission? Well, I will, oh, there's Ms. Aykono. Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Caffrelli. I just had a, for the Selectwoman, if you could just explain, there's been a lot of questions around the town attorney and the role, and how they interact and such, can you just give a little insight as to, you know, your interaction, and, you know, maybe moving forward, we can get some clarification from some other people on, on that role, too?
Thank you. Yes, so I know there's been some discussion about this, I did listen to some of the meetings talking about establishing a legal department. I know, for example, my former colleague in the House, Fred Camillo, is the First Selectman of Greenwich, and they have an entire legal department. It's huge, but they actually still hire outside counsel for, for things. I, I had, I mean, I had some sense of how our town operates, I served on the RTM, I served on the, on the Board of Ed, but I really had no clue until you get into this job. I think the first select person does need to have a town attorney to advise them and give them guidance, and many times, the first select person is not an attorney, so to have that, you know, feedback, and I'll give you an example, you know, Sans Clary walks into my office and tells me he thinks we have a pandemic on our hands, and my first inclination is to call the town attorney, to say, uh, what do I do? And he says, I'll be right over with a declaration of, of emergency that you need to sign. Those are things that a leader of a town needs to have, someone to rely on for legal advice and, and opinion. But the town attorney does so much more, so much more, and it's, it's literally impossible for all the legal work to be done by one person. We have, you know, all these departments, and all these different things, and labor negotiations, and lawsuits that are filed by the town, and tax appeals, and lawsuits on taxes, and all kinds of things. I mean, it's, it's actually tremendous, and to advise the, the town bodies. The town attorney is on almost every town meeting, just in case there's a question from the Board of Finance, from the RTM. It is a lot of work, I, but I think, I, I, listen, I don't know what the correct answer is. The way we do it now, we, we have a town attorney, and then we also employ outside counsel for a lot of different things, for our labor negotiations to a certain extent, to assist our HR department, we have legal advice in the Conservation Department, obviously, when we were in a situation when our Conservation Director was arrested, we had to bring in outside firming to assist us. There's a lot of legal issues involved with land use, you do need, you know, our Conservation Director is not a lawyer, so there are issues sometimes where he'll, he'll need to speak to an attorney, I would, same with zoning, same with really any of these departments, so there are, attorneys are needed vastly and across the board. Do we need to employ an entire Department of Attorneys that could potentially be sitting there all day? Or should we contract it out as needed? I don't know if that's something that should be in the Charter or not, but I think it's something worth, and obviously, the town attorney could speak to this much better than, than I can, but I think you should look at how other towns do it, and how, what the efficiency is of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, did you have any follow-up questions for? Does anyone else have any questions? Oh, it's John.
Yeah, back to me, sorry.
Okay.
You kind of opened up, opened up a topic that's kind of near, dear to my heart. Have, have we, Brenda, and I, I don't recall whether we've done this ever, have we ever done an analysis about how much money we spend on legal fees and hiring outside attorneys, and compare that to whether, if we had in-house counsel, we might in fact be saving money if we went in that direction? When I say in-house counsel, I'm talking about a town attorney, or maybe one or two of them who are on the Fairfield payroll, and we, they, all they do is work for the town and advise the town and represent the town in legal matters, and, and I'm not suggesting that if we ever went in that direction, that would totally obliterate the need to use outside counsel at times. I, in Bridgeport, I'm a full-time city attorney, work for the city, been there 23 years, but I, and we have 12 lawyers working, they're not saying Fairfield needs that many, but we too, at times, have to hire outside attorneys. So I guess my point is, have we ever done that analysis to your knowledge, and maybe that's something that we should do for this Commission to look at and consider? And then my only other point, which I, which is related to this, which I mentioned in some of my things to look at, and whether this is fair or unfair, there is a perception, and it's been this perception for many years, past administrations, that the town attorney is the first select man, first select woman's attorney. There's that perception. And maybe one, and, and under the current Charter, the first select person has the authority to appoint a town attorney, and can get rid of that town attorney whenever he or she wants to. So maybe one of the ways to avoid that perception is to maybe, we can consider this as a committee, is whoever is the town attorney is appointed for a term of four years, five years, something like that. So we kind of get away from that perception. You're not going to get away from it 100%, but it helps a little bit, so just a couple of thoughts there.
I think, um...
John, I would, if I could just respond to that?
Yeah.
So, so I, I hear what you're saying about this political thing, but let's face it, you know, you run for office, and you're in office. As a CEO for the last two years, I have relied heavily on the town attorney, heavily, to make decisions, to ask for feedback, is this legal, does that work, is that, is that against the Charter? Those types of things are valuable, right, to the CEO of the town. I think that the first select person, whomever it is, over the period of many years of our town, going forward, needs to have someone they can trust, and that they feel comfortable with, right? So, for example, if I left and you appointed a town attorney for five years, and I'm gone in two years, I don't think that's fair to the next first select person, to not have someone that they trust, or they feel comfortable with. So, listen, I think it all comes down to people, you elect someone who you think is honest and trustworthy, and hope that they behave in that manner, that, with integrity. I think the leader of the town needs to have someone that they can trust, to lean on for those, those kinds of things, and not someone, someone else picked for them.
I, I get it. I mean, I, but that's, that's a first statement, it's just a thought, I, I know...
Yeah, I really wanted to avoid, sorry, and Selectman Flynn, I wanted to avoid...
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to the chair anyway.
No, 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 very, no, fine, John, you're, you're Commissioner, I asked the Commissioners if they had any questions, that's well within the purview, but I did, I do want to avoid it back and forth, and we kind of want to get to, I don't want to get into arguing the substance or debating any of these matters right now, so I...
Right.
Tom, I, with all due respect, unless it's, I mean, I really don't want to start a conversation that gets into the debating...
It has nothing to do with that.
All right.
My comment was his first question. In the, in the budget book, we have the, the specific amount that is spent on legal fees each year for general legal matters, which during my time has been $300,000 to $500,000 per year. That is not the, the best thing, John, only because in, in certain situations, we've had attorneys on staff, whether it be in the human resources area or in other areas, that have taken on some of the, some of the responsibilities. So to your question, it's not really apples to apples, and doing an analysis of really how much we're spending on legal fees globally, including legal fees that get charged to individual departments, is probably appropriate. I had no issue debating anything, Brian, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, and I think, and I think, and I did have a follow-up question, if I may, I think that if I'm understanding you correctly, Brenda, is what you're trying to say here is that there's been some discussion about who the town attorney serves, if it's appropriate, and, and the fact is, is that the First Selectmen has traditionally, and as far as I understand, appointed the town attorney, and that process is what you're advocating should continue?
Well, I just think, yeah, I do, I just think that in this position now, I, I think it's invaluable to have a trusted attorney, that you feel comfortable, and that you rely on, and you know that you feel that their advice is truthful and honest, as opposed to having someone say, okay, here you are, that's your town attorney, and you may not think they're an honorable person, or you may not think they're capable, and then that puts you at a disadvantage in running the town, and making very important... that puts you at a disadvantage in running the town and making very important decisions.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Are there any other follow-up questions for the first selectman? All right. Well, thank you once, oh, Pam. You, there you are.
Sorry. It goes back just to budget, um, and process. There, there's something also, since you raised the question about, um, you know, all the meetings and such, that I know that the Board of Ed always is in a rush to get their budget in on time. Is it, should there be more flexibility there too, based on the fact that you're waiting on their budget to present yours? Do you have any thoughts on the start of that, how that fits into the budget process?
Well, that's, um, I mean, I don't know if that's guided by charter, Pam, but, um, obviously, uh, they come out with their budget in January. Uh, I'm trying to work and make that more inclusive, uh, the town work directly because it is three quarters of the budget. Um, but I, as far as the process goes, I just think we can streamline this process, still have our checks and balances, allow the government, uh, you know, allow the public to weigh in, to let all elected officials ask questions, whatever that the commission ends up, um, deciding or working on, what the format, whether it be, um, a, a fuller, a first select person solely with a Board of Finance and a smaller RTM, um, a Board of Selectmen, or whatever it ends up being, I think there needs to be more cohesiveness. Now, I don't know how we marry the Board of Ed with the town because it's so separate and they have their own statutes that sort of, they have to follow. Um, I, I don't know that that's a charter thing about the timing. Uh, Mendick looks like he wants to.
Yeah, there are restrictions on that. You know, the Board of Ed's, we can't merge them, but I think Steve's going to expand on that right now.
You're so perceptive, Madam First Select. And I guess maybe I was jumping out of my seat. I apologize. It's so, so nice to see you. Um, one of the things I wanted to point because I think that the Commissioner, uh, Iwakono, raised the question and it was a good question. The budget process for the town, which includes the Board of Education, is a town function. It's a function that can be totally set forth in your charter. And what most of the towns that I have worked with, um, require the Board of Education to provide their information in a timely manner in accordance with the schedule that's either set forth by charter or set forth by ordinance under the authority of the charter. So, um, you cannot tell them how to spend their money. You can't control their lines, but you can, there's Supreme Court law on this. You can tell them, um, when to get their budget in and what format to follow. So if you want to see all the lines, you can require them to provide you with all the lines in their budget. You just can't do anything about them. Um, but at least you, um, you can, um, have a uniform system and that they play into that system. Um, and all you can really do with them is the bottom line, but you want to get their budget as soon as possible because it is such a substantial portion. So the charter can, in fact, um, include a Board of Education in the process.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Cafarelli, could I have a follow-up?
Of course. Yes. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Cause now I'm intrigued. I actually met with the superintendent and Board, uh, of Ed Chair and Vice Chair today and my team to sort of start the ball rolling. Um, yeah, they, they'll submit their budget typically in January. I'm already like really al- almost there. And then I have to present to the Board of Selectmen in February. So it, I think it would be really awesome if the commission could look a little bit more into how other towns do it because I would love that heads up, uh, have some more information prior because it would help me in the budget building process to know what, having conversations across the table, telling me what you're going to do is not the same thing as giving me a document with the actual numbers on them. Um,
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, please. Go ahead.
Answer the rhetorical question or comment. What you can do is you can include the Board of Education in the same question and answer process that you, you, um, put your department heads through. Uh, and so you can require that they submit the data to you by a date certain. And it may not be the finalized budget, but it would be enough to give you the ability to get started in your budget process. Uh, most of the charters I know, um, uh, do require all department heads, including Boards of Education, to provide the data when requested by the chief executive of the municipality. Uh, so that can be done by charter. It can be done by ordinance. You can establish an ordinance if you don't have a charter provision on it. Um, it's, um, I think there's a lot of flexibility there. Uh, you may get some pushback. Some Boards of Education push back very hard on these things. But, uh, in a lot of charters, I've included Boards of Education in the procurement process. Um, in, uh, I've even tried to get legal control. We were talking about the town attorney, but making sure that the town, it's recognized that the town attorney represents the entire government. Now, town attorneys are typically not education specialists and you bring in specialists to work with them. Um, but I, when I was a corporation counsel myself, I had major fights and we eventually got control over the Board of Education legal, um, issues, um, because they are the largest department in most municipalities. And the property is all owned by the municipality, not by the Board of Education. So, um, there are things that can be done and, and, um, you know, if asked by the commission, I'll be very, I'll look forward to working on the issue and trying to bring clarity to it.
Sounds like a great issue.
Oh, thank you. I mean, I, I would, um, I'd be really interested in having the commission review this more closely. Um, I'm not trying to step on any toes when I say that. I just, you know, obviously it would be so much, uh, more efficient and helpful, uh, to, to build a budget with some actual data, uh, from the largest piece of the budget. Um, you know, it would be extraordinarily helpful and I really appreciate you bringing that up. And I would greatly encourage the commission to look into this a bit more.
Duly noted. Pam, go.
Um, thank you, Chairman Cafarelli. Yeah, I just would like to say that I would definitely be a commissioner who would want this on the list for review. Um, especially having served on the Board of Ed in the past, I can tell you just that there's always been confusion about the date where, that the budget was supposed to go to the first select person. And, um, you know, that, that's been an, an ongoing, why do we have this random February 1st date or whatever it is. Um, so I, I, I certainly want to have an expanded conversation about everything that we just learned right here.
Great. Are there any, uh, follow-up questions or any other questions from commissioners for Brenda? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to join us this evening and, uh, look forward to continuing the conversation. And, um, we are going to get to work and, uh, start making a list and, and looking at these things. And we'll, we will be checking in with you, um, frequently and, uh, letting you know how the pro- process is going.
Well, thank, thank you. And again, I, I really do sincerely thank each of you. I know this is a lot of work and the, the more meetings you have, I realize the more you have to look at. And it's so complicated. So I, I do appreciate all your hard work and obviously myself and, uh, the Board of Selectmen members and all elected officials. Uh, I think there was some confusion, um, over the last couple of weeks where people thought that they're, didn't have an opportunity if they didn't have it during, and, and of course, I know you're able to receive information from anybody at any time, uh, via email or follow-up conversation. So I, I do appreciate the hard work and I, I stand ready to ask, answer any questions over the period of time while you meet. Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Um, so then the next item on our agenda is item, um, the commission to review and discussion of the issues tracking chart. And so to kind of, this is our, this is the level set meeting and we're going to begin it. But I'm not sure, you know, how long, um, what we'll get through this evening. But to frame it, I, if Attorney Mendick, if you wouldn't mind to kind of give an overview of what we're intending to accomplish, uh, this evening and if it carries over into the next meeting then, um, and, uh, we will just, uh, go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, now the work begins. We've been, we've been attending the, the play for the last few months and now we're running out of time. It, it's, uh, this is a very, very substantial tracking chart, I have to tell you for the record. I think I mentioned to the Chair and Vice Chair, uh, last week that, um, uh, you have a very participatory community. You have a community that is engaged and very interested, interested in what's going on. Um, you're, we, we need to hit the ground running. Um, and we're at the end of the year. Uh, my hope is that between this meeting and the next meeting, we'll begin to lay out, uh, the priorities and begin to conduct our, um, your due diligence on the big issues that you're going to face. Um, but let me tell you, and I'm looking, uh, in front of me, you can't see it as I've got your calendar and, um, for example, the budget issue. Let me just explain the budget issue. Uh, normally when we go through a budget process, uh, budget issue process, I'll have at least two meetings and then the third and maybe a fourth. Um, but the first meeting would probably include the players in the community. We've heard from them, um, at this juncture. Um, but, um, maybe they wouldn't be the first thing. The first hearing is I'd probably put together a budget panel, a panel of experts from around the state, people that I would, um, call on, hopefully from communities that are roughly equivalent to the, the 11th largest or 12th largest municipality in the state. So there's a number of communities, uh, some of which are right in your neck of the woods, others in other parts of the state, where we bring them in, show them, show you how their budget processes work, um, what best practices are, what things should be in the process that are not in the process at the present time. And that would be, uh, the first panel we would probably have. The second panel, after you have a time to digest this, um, would be to bring your budget players in. The, the first selectman, woman, the, uh, members of the Board of Finance or leader of the Board of Finance, finance officials, RTM officials, Board of Education, the key players in the budget process, uh, to talk about, you know, how they see it and where they'd like to go. And hopefully at the end of that meeting, um, you would be able to give me some direction on where you want to go. And the third meeting would be providing you with a draft. Um, I would probably give you a series of background documents and what these other budgets look like, uh, and what, uh, the processes look like. And, um, and then hopefully by that second or third meeting, we would have an opportunity to, um, go over a draft, have the, um, stakeholders, uh, look at the draft and begin the process of completing that draft. So it would be at least three meetings, substantive meetings, and then there'd probably be follow-up as parts of other meetings where we, um, send the document around, have everybody look at the document on the outside to try to reach a consensus, um, and then try to fix the document as we move forward. So I'm, that's why I'm telling you, some of these things can take three or four meetings. Um, and so, um, the goal tonight and at our next meeting, and unfortunately we're not meeting again, I think till the, um, 9th of, um, December, um, is to begin to narrow down, uh, those issues and to clarify what those issues are. And there may be some issues that are going to be left at the, at the side of the road. There may be a number of issues that can be handled more mechanically, uh, that we won't need large, um, um, a lot of due diligence on. Um, and, and I could see some of those like coming up with a glossary or definitions, a provision. That's the kind of thing you'll say, Steve, can you put that together? I'll put that together for you. Um, as there'll be some drafting issues that I would work with the town attorney on, um, to see if we could bring, streamline the document, bring some clarification to the document. Um, some of it may be as simple as, uh, you may make a decision that we have too many boards and commissions, or should the boards and commissions be in the charter or should they be in the code of ordinances so that you have, um, the ability to modify your boards and commissions without going to a charter revision process. Um, I'm, actually my hearing on Thursday in Hartford is all about the philosophy of boards and commissions and what do you want to do. So what we need to do, if you look at the top of the tracking document, there are three columns that probably made no sense to anybody because they weren't being used, um, in, in the initial run. One is called substantial due diligence. The other is research and report. And, and then the final is a relevance discussion. So as we go through the document, what we need to think about are what are the issues that we need substantial due diligence on? Budget is an is, issue that we're going to need substantial due diligence on. You're probably going to need it on, on governance issues. Um, uh, you'll want to have some substantial due diligence. So those would require multiple, uh, meetings to really begin to pare down till we, to the commission gets to a point where they have an action item that they can reach consensus or actually vote on. Research and report, um, you know, this might be a lesser, uh, due diligence issue. I'll give you an example that I don't think is a, um, a, 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 one that requires a lot of due diligence, but will require a lot of background material. There's been discussion about the town attorney. Now, we could turn it into a big deal and invite, um, corporation councils and city attorneys and town attorneys from around the state to talk about, uh, how they do their job, or I can give you some background materials to show you how those are done, what the provisions look like, what kind of safeguards there are, how are they appointed, at whose, um, pleasure do they serve, um, et cetera. Um, but you, you know, so there would be some diligence you want to look at, uh, but you might be able to make a decision without going through a multiple night process. Um, I, I, I think that's an example of, of, of that kind of issue. Um, the issue of the constables, for example. If you want to look at the issue, I think we've had some of it answered, uh, in the public testimony. It may be a simple question of, does it belong in the charter? Um, and if it does any harm and, and you'll have some elected officials that are going to be upset, should we just leave it in the charter? Why don't we at least define what it is? So that would be kind of a le- lesser issue, and I'm not diminishing the role of the constables by saying that, uh, but it would be the kind of issue we can say, yeah, we're not going to spend a lot of time on it. Steve, can you find out, verify that the function that was testified to is in fact the function? And then making determinations to whether or not it should be in the charter, whether we need those elected officials or whether, um, they can exist under an ordinance or statutory structure, um, uh, in some other place. Uh, again, I think that's a relatively simple, uh, issue. Um, and so the, so the obje- and then relevance discussion is, should something be in the charter at all? Um, and I've already kind of helped you along a little bit on that by, uh, putting at the back of the documents on page 18 and 19, um, the procedural issues that have been raised by the public and the non-charter issues that have been raised by the public. Um, so I kind of did a quick run on what I thought the simple issues were that were simply not relevant for the charter. And, and therefore, uh, really should, you know, you should take a look at them and make sure I, I, I properly classify them. Um, but, um, um, and, and some of the procedural issues you may look at in a global sense in terms of, are there standards you want to establish for boards and commissions on the kinds of procedures that they should follow? Um, but again, and that would be a, an issue that would, would, you know, would require, um, again, some more diligence than it, it won't be a one night issue. It would be a two or three night issue. So we need to think about that as we begin to, um, as we begin to, uh, develop priorities. I, I hope that's helpful.
Uh, yes, it is, uh, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Steve, a question, a follow-up question?
Hey, to the extent possible, I think that we can kind of transition into a bit of an informal conversation here, if it's okay with everyone, as long as we just kind of go in order. So please, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, Steve, thank, thank you. You touched upon many of the, the things that I was struggling with about big topics. What do we do with it? What are the easy items that we could deal with? Some of the other things that, objectives of making the charter more streamlined, more accessible, we can figure our, our way out through that. But if we lift certain things, um, out of the charter, and I recall you mentioning early on that there's two things that were required to have in the charter, to establish the legislative branch and sta- establish the executive branch and nothing else is required. Now, I don't think we would ever get to, you know, a two paragraph charter, just to be overly simplistic about it. But if we try to take a lot of things out of the charter because they don't make sense for the charter at this point in time, and we want to handle them through an ordinance or the town code, and I'm not really sure what the difference between those two are at this point, but if we wanted to do that, how do we ensure that we protect ourselves and the town against just taking things out and saying, oh, we're going to handle it over there, but the over there never really happens? But the over there never really happens.
That's a great question, Commissioner, and one that I've dealt with in charters in the past. And and we shouldn't do it lightly. I mean, you shouldn't, when I say you need to think about how to deal with boards and commissions and whether you want to move them out of the charter? Or do we want to eliminate departments? If I if I had my druthers in most charters, I would eliminate every department except the critical central service departments. I might include police and fire there, I might not. But what I would do, aside from the central departments, is have a provision, there shall be departments of the government that provide police services, fire services, planning and zoning, you know, zoning services, whatever zoning enforcement, all that. So you lay down what you believe should be the essential function of government, mandate them in your charter, which is your constitution, and then create them through budget and through ordinance. You may also have in that provision, certain standards that need to be met. We've been talking about, for example, I'm giving you a broad sense of this qualifications issue. I'm not a big fan of having qualifications in charters. I'm a big fan of having a best practices standard in the charter and leaving it to your personnel professionals to establish those standards and any statutory references that may have standards that are that are set by statute. Obviously, we can't circumvent them anyhow. You know, and and there may be experience requirements you might want to put in. A lot of charters have, don't want to, you don't want to have a first year law student as your town attorney, for example. So you may have some level of requisite experience and things like that. So if I had my druthers, I'd take every department out for the most part and move them elsewhere. That's culturally impossible to do in many communities. So I'm just pointing out, the ultimate goal that I would have with a charter is to make it constitutional, set the ethical standards in the charter, set the broad parameters. How do you create a department in the charter? How do you create a board and commission in the charter? And I would do the same with boards and commissions, except the ones that are absolutely critical to the central forms of government, Board of Education, Board of Finance in your town, the RTM, the Board of Selectment, you know, and the mayor. If you had a mayor or the city council, if you had a city council. And again, with the other boards and commissions, you may think planning and zoning requires being in the charter, fine. But I would mandate a planning and zoning commission, a conservation commission, mandate all those entities in the charter, but have them created by ordinance so that it can be updated as federal and state standards change or statutes change. You can make those changes, but you have to, you require that they exist. How do you get from here to there? What you do is you don't eliminate anything from the charter. You move them into a sunset provision. So you create a chapter in your charter that if you want to move the departments out, you move the departments into a sunset section. So in the new section of the charter will say you shall have a police department, a fire department, you know, a planning and zoning department, et cetera. But in the sunset provision, all the charter language that is currently there, you might modernize it just in case the local elected officials don't get around to making changes as quickly as they should. You leave them in the charter in a sunset provision. And the sunset occurs when the ordinance is adopted. So there would be no loss of the function. It would remain a charter function until the legislative body and the chief executive come to an agreement and the item passes as an ordinance, however you ultimately decide to do it. So there is a way to make sure that you don't lose the functions because you don't get action taken by the local government. I will tell you that I have one town, I will not mention it, that we did this seven years ago and I just today had a conversation because they're coming up with charter revision in a year. When I'm done with this one, I will probably start working on that one. I said, what have we done with the sunset provisions? Oh, we haven't gotten around to it seven years later. Now, they don't go anywhere. The provisions are all still in the charter. So that's why, thank God, we did it that way. But they're still in the charter. But I told them, I said, I beg you, please do it before we meet. It will be embarrassing to go 10 years later and those provisions are still sitting there. And it was a big, important thing and the voters voted for it. But the legislative body and the mayor have never gotten around, three mayors now, have never gotten around to fixing it. So hopefully they will do that, but that's the way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And John Mottola.
Thank you. So Steve, the benefit of doing something like that, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that if you have the commission established by ordinance through the process you just described, it's easier to make changes to that particular commission, its roles and responsibilities if it's in an ordinance as opposed to a charter where you have to go through charter revision to make any changes. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
You want to establish your constitutional standards in your charter. You want to make sure that if there's something that's so inherently important to the community, that it's clearly stated in the charter, so that it has to be articulated in any ordinance that is adopted. So you want to make sure that if you make those kinds of changes, that the things you really care about, minority party representation, the composition of bodies, I heard the issues about equality and things like that. Those are the kinds of standards that would be in your charter that then have to be reflected in the ordinances that are adopted by by the town under the structure.
And so my only follow would be if it's mandated in the charter, that wouldn't mean that if by ordinance, Parks and Rec Commission obviously is established by ordinance because we have it in our charter. It always will still be mandated by the charter. In other words, 10 years from now, legislative body or a first select person can't vote to get rid of Parks and Recreation, it's always going to be there. It's always going to be a function.
Yeah, that's right. So you establish the function. One of the other things, John, I've done, I think I did it in the Bridgeport Charter that failed back in 2012 over a political issue called the Board of Education, as you may recall back in that cycle. A provision I throw in to a lot of charters is, I think somebody talked about, I forget who, which of the speakers talked about reorganization. Reorganization is something you want to put in a charter. How do you reorganize? And what you want to make sure, if you keep departments in a charter and you're not willing to take the move, and I'm not advocating that you do that, I'm telling you what I think the perfect charter would be. But if you keep the charter and you have these things in the charter, what you want to make sure is that you're not stifling yourself or inhibiting your ability to engage in best practices where you might merge functions to be more economical, to be smarter about the way you administer your government. So I have in a lot of my charters that in spite of the fact that it's established as a department in the charter, if you reorganize and merge and maintain the functions of that department, you have the capacity to do it. It makes for a few messy years while the charter still has these two provisions in there. But the, there's a countervailing provision that says you can do this. I think it's cleaner to go the other way, but it's another way to go there. It's kind of a half measure to go there. But there's all, as John Mottola will tell everybody here, one of the problems in merging departments in interlocal agreements, if you were to try to work on sursharing functions in a region is something called MIRA, the Employment, Municipal Employee Relations Act and the collective bargaining agreements that fall under those acts. And so as you see drafts coming from me, you will see a lot of references to MIRA in charters. I make sure it's clear because over the years I've been in situations where it's like, well, the charter says that the police department has to have a hearing on this disciplinary matter. And that is true under the charter, but there's a collective bargaining agreement that trumps it. And so I've tried to put into all my charters in those sections, language that makes it clear that it's subject to law and collective bargaining. I mean, law covers it, but I want it very, very clear, the collective bargaining agreements have the force of law.
Thank you.
Jay?
Yes, I mean, this conversation has been very illuminating because I've wrestled frankly with what the what the incremental benefit is to have your hands tied for 10 to 15 years, right? In the corporate environment I'm used to, the longest contract terms we would prefer is five years. And the majority of those contracts get opened up halfway through. So there has to be incremental benefit. Why would I tie my hands for 10 to 15 years? And I wrestled with finding any justification for that. So now understanding that there's a way to preserve the function in a, you know, in a standard or a process or a metric and a transition to that within a sunset clause, I'd be I'd be strongly in favor at looking at that for all of the departments other than those that benefit from tying our hands for 10 to 15 years because that's what that's what we're really talking about. The second thing I'd really like to see is a very, very deep dive on other forms of government. I, for one, do not pretend to be very familiar with even the current form of government because I don't think we understand all the pros and cons, other than we could make what we have as as Selectman Flynn so eloquently stated. We all know we can make what we have better. But at the same time, I think we do have a responsibility to look at other forms of government to say, is it then better to accomplish those incremental benefits in our current form of government through a different form? And, you know, so beyond that, the other areas, just boards and commissions in general, how other towns manage those, specifically the command and control system that goes around them such that you don't have all this distributed asynchronous decision making that essentially makes it impossible to execute a strategic plan or initiative across the town when essentially everybody is doing their own thing. So if I could ask for three focus areas, those would be the ones.
Can I, if Jim Baldwin is still, I see his name up there. I have a question for Jim on boards and commissions because I was puzzled and I have to study those sections a little more carefully. Hi, Jim, there he is. Do these boards and commissions have independent authority to create fees that are not governed by legislative action?
They have the purview to set the fees, that's correct.
And so there would not be an ordinance that would be adopted? It would be the independent board and commission would have that authority?
That's correct.
All right. If that goes to the issue of command and control, I think.
There is no ordinance which, to my knowledge, which covers their fees.
In many communities, boards and commissions and departments come together and the fee schedule is part of the overall budget. And and fee schedules are approved either through the budget process or through a general ordinance so that it takes into account some of the issues that were raised. I think by Selectman Flynn, actually. This is me, so.
It's definitely worth it. No, I, it's Pam Iacono speaking. I, it's definitely something we should delve into. I think we've had this discussion going through the whole budget process. And we started finally a couple of years ago to bring in actually not just the department head, but a chairman of a commission to appear before the for me at the RTM to hear what their thought process was and to hear what our thinking was as elected officials accountable to the people. Because that commission and where we wanted to go as a town didn't necessarily jive. And it might not even have fit in with what the department had wanted to achieve. So I think we do need to include this as part of our discussion. I see John Mottola is nodding his head, he's been through this too.
John, yeah.
And then you have, then you have the other layer. You have some appointed boards, but you also have a number of elected boards and commissions as well.
Yes. Right. I, I think we should look at it. I would like, maybe I got to read the charter again over again to see which boards and commissions have that ability and the member of the Board of Finance, I do remember times we've had, is it the Marina Commission? I get confused, there's so many of them sometimes. And we questioned them about their fees and strongly suggested that you kind of need to raise your fees a little bit. So, but again, we don't really have any authority over that. And maybe looking at that through the budget process is probably something we should look at.
Okay.
And just to be clear though, my concern about command and control is not just fees. It would also be operations and that essentially the departments and commissions actually be able to support one another's strategic or just operational processes when there is in fact crossover and that the boards and commissions are not in conflict with one another. So I'm going beyond fees if we can.
All right. So now, I mean, that all being said, how do we start putting these into buckets? One thought I had, you know, I don't know, Steve, I defer to you because this is a new process to me. Maybe we go through those non-charter issues and just get them out of the way and then go through the top and start putting them into these buckets. And I, I'm assuming that you, you're proposing that we go through each topic and say whether or not it belongs in the substantial due diligence, the research or.
I think that's what you want to, that's what we want to start doing. And then what we could do as a result of that is I could, by the next meeting, depending on how far we go, begin to kind of lay them out subject matter wise. Right now, they're just amorphous. A lot of repetitive stuff here, but but that would be, that would be useful. The only thing I would suggest is that you maybe as homework, take a look at the procedural issues and the non-charter issues so that we don't spend a lot of time going through them now. And let's start marching through the chapters where we think there are substantive issues. That's the only change I would make to your suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good to me. Does anyone have any thoughts on how we proceed? Is that good with everyone here? Okay, all right, Steve, then.
You want to start running through?
Yes, please, so.
I'm going to skip over editorial issues because those are things like cross referencing and indexing and et cetera, et cetera. But let's, let's start with the preamble because the preamble would be the first issue. That's again, not a, to me, that's kind of a subcommittee. If you want to do something like that, you probably don't need your lawyer time working on that. The two of us could probably be helpful as you begin to look at things and make sure, you know, we're not libeling or defaming anybody in our, depending on what we say in our preamble. But it's a great exercise. And I might suggest having a subcommittee that begins to look at that issue and talk to people, historians and other people throughout the community to see where you want to go with a preamble or or not. I had one town just shut down at a preamble. Most of my towns love preambles, but one town just totally shut down and said, no, we're not going to do that. But I have found it to be a pretty interesting exercise. So that, so that doesn't fall into any of the categories except, you know, create a little subcommittee, happy to give you some guidance and maybe show you some preambles. There's not a lot, most of the preambles are in charters I've done. So I can get you some examples of preambles. But there won't be a lot, there'll be a few.
Sounds good to me. Pam?
So is it the norm to have a preamble or most people don't have a preamble?
Most people, most charters do not have preambles. You won't find them in many charters. New Britain has one, Hampden has one, Hartford has one. I believe Waterbury has one, those are all charters I've worked on because I've always viewed them as really good exercises. And they tend to be, I think Stanford may have one, and I did not work on Stanford. I'd have to look at a couple of other charters. So it's not the norm, but it's. So it's not the norm, but it's, um, it's a ni- it's a good exercise. Um, but you need to be, uh, we're living in a polarized world, so you need to be careful about how you say things and what you're saying. So that, that's my only caution.
Uh, I, I would not be interested in pursuing this knowing how much work we have to do, but I'll defer to the commission if they wanna. Form a subcommittee, I would not be interested in serving.
Yeah, I agree with Pam Ikonos.
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, I, I agree too. We'd have to water it down, so it, uh, would. You know, in the current environment, so it wouldn't say anything anyway. So I, I don't see it as a productive effort.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that also. It's, it's funny, I've looked at a lot of, uh, charters around the state and of course. E- everything's online now, so I don't think people even are gonna see it that much. If the town, you know, wants something that's sort of a statement of values or who we are, I think that's a bigger process that probably needs a. Community-based input and all that and, and that's fine, but I think really given the amount of time, amount of issues we're gonna have. I don't think we really need to get into it here, especially if we haven't had one for, I guess, forever.
Well, that's good. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, is there consensus?
No takers on the preamble, I mean, I, John Matola, okay. So we're, we're, we're moving on.
Good. That's one issue off the table. Uh, so then we get to Article One. The first item would fall into the category of, uh, research and report. It's review the defined terms to make sure there's consistency where required. Uh, this is something that, um, I will take a look at, not in the early going, but as we get deeper into the process. To see what kind of changes we're making, um, to see what terms show up on a regular basis. Uh, I did talk to Jim Baldwin about this. Um, there are not a lot of process issues in your charter. And so there are, uh, like terms of what, what a majority vote means and things like that. It's not a term that's used often in your charter, which is very interesting and unusual. Uh, but this would be an issue that, uh, I would, uh, with your permission, as we go through the process. Um, I would be looking at to come up with a glossary for the document.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's a good.
I, I will say that, that we have a section in the charter that speaks to Robert's rules. And unless otherwise stated, all boards and commissions are supposed to follow Robert's rules.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Attorney Baldwin mentioned something about the reference to Robert's rules unless otherwise stated.
Yeah, that, that's right. There, there's a section of the charter I don't have it memorized, but it does speak to. Uh, all boards and commissions must follow Robert's rules unless otherwise. Stated by their own rules and regulations of that particular body. Whether that's appropriate or not is left to the commission to, uh, to consider.
And what's, I'm losing, I'm, I've lost you on the context of that, is that?
We're talking about the review of the def- defined terms still?
Yeah, may- maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, Steve, about, about, uh, it being sparse. In terms of, of how, how different bodies are regulated.
Okay. Alright, I got it. I'm sorry, thank you. Now, Section one point four. Review and bring up to date with changes in eight, nine, and ten. Well, there's not much we can do on that. Eight, nine, and ten are the sections of the charter that deal with, um, your boards and commissions and your departments. And the grid in the beginning of the, uh, in Section one point four. Uh, and I know Jim Baldwin has talked about this, uh, in this process. Needs to be updated in accordance with whatever we do as we go deeper into the, the documents. So there's not much we're gonna be able to do with this section until we act on the substantive sections that connect to it.
Right.
Alright?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Alright. Then we have the constables. Um, you know, we could just leave the issue based on the testimony that was received the other day. Um, and, um, or whatever you please, it's, um. Or just forget about it because we got an answer to the question everybody's comfortable with. It's, it's really.
Well, I, I actually reached out. I, it's Pam Ikonos. I spoke with a couple constables. And yes, they do think that they serve a, a function, but. They didn't, they weren't of the opinion that we need to have so many of them. We currently have seven, so. I'd like to know what other towns do and I'd like to see if we can cut the number down.
Or you even need to define in the charter the number, wouldn't you be able to just accept the, um. Responsibility that constables provide to the community and allow it to be managed. Through the ordinance process and that they serve the, um, probate court. And the probate court can decide on what type of operation, or, you know, how many they need in numbers to achieve. The objective of effective process service and just recognize that they have historically existed. That presently exist and they're gonna be managed through the, the, uh, probate court. And not get into the, the, the details of defining how many and their roles and responsibilities, et cetera.
Well, the problem is they're elected officials, so.
Yeah, they're elected.
Yeah, so there needs to be some reference.
They, they go on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that required, Steve, that the, these types of constables have to be elected?
Uh, yeah, I gotta tell you something. I've only dealt with constables in one other charter. I've not seen them anywhere else, so I don't know the answer. I, I'll look at fifty-two dash fifty and seven dash one, and seven dash eighty-nine. John Matola had his hand up. I thought he may have, maybe knew something about this that I don't.
Maybe he does.
I, all I would say is, I, I really don't think we should waste that much time on this. We have a lot of work to do. This is the least of our problems, debating how many constables we need.
That's, that's true too.
I heard from one or two constables and it seems like they do something, I would leave it alone. Is it really that important to us? That's all.
I, I love that mindset as well.
So I'm gonna be the, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be the, uh, the squeaky wheel. Cause I, it's a, I think it's a candidate for moving out of the charter. I don't know. It's a critical function. But it can be done via ordinance, so why wouldn't be a, a candidate to move out of the charter?
I don't know if you can do it, cause, for ordinance, because it's, it's an elected position.
But if other towns, Steve, were you saying that other towns don't have constables in their?
A lot of towns do not have them, um.
Who does the service then?
Who does this, right.
They, well, the marshals do service in a lot of towns. Some of the older towns have constables because. That, it, it's been a form of local patronage is what it is. And so they're able to do service within the community. I'm just checking something out while we're talking here. Um, and, uh, the, uh. Yeah, it, it, nowhere in here does it talk about what their function is. Um, and so, um, it just basically creates, I just wanted to double check in the charter while we were doing this. It just creates the position and what the, where it was vague to me was, uh, that it, it just didn't seem to exist. It seems to me if you have elected officials, the elected officials should be established in the charter. And, um, and so if you're gonna keep it, you need to have a reference. And I would probably simply state that they, uh, their responsibility, uh, is simply those. Well, it already says that they have the powers prescribed by the general statutes, um, for their office, they and the JP's. Um, so, um, because they're elected officials, they do need to be referenced in the charter, I would say.
Okay. Right, so the town, so Steve, the towns that don't include the constables in their charter. Just cannot have char- constables in their towns, correct?
You can have appointed constables and that's what I'd have to take a look at it, you know, and, and then you could create by ordinance. If you, if there's a statute that permits the, uh, position to exist. You don't have to mandate it in your charter, you can do it by ordinance, uh, to, um, uh, to J- Jay's point. Um, you know, you, you, we might, you might look at that option. I mean, it'll be a simple. To me, it's a research and report and a very simple research and report. I would have to look at the statutes, tell you what the options are. And you could make a pretty quick decision. This is not a, this is not a multiple hour hearing. This is not even an hour hearing. Uh, this would probably be a half hour, uh, twenty minutes discussion based on, uh, whatever report. I can provide to you in terms of their, uh, what they do, so. So I mean, that would probably be.
I per- I personally would agree with Jay then and think if we can find a better way to do it than if it's a fifteen minute conversation, I, we should have it. If we're opening this thing up to clean it up, let's clean it up.
Right, okay. Alright, so I'll put that into the, the research and report category. Um, again, not a big deal. Um, then you have the next category and again, I, I think a lot of this will be governed by what goes on further in the document. Um, there, there are a number of comments that came in, um, in fact, I think Commissioner Matola. Uh, raised a number of these issues. We have the issue of, um, what do we do about the assistant town attorneys? Um, I don't know if we wanna address the issue of the town attorney right now before we get into the, you know, i- i-. Before we get into the section, since it's raised here. Uh, do we assume that the town attorney issue is something you're gonna wanna look at more substantively? In general, not only the, um, the role of the assistant, um, but the function of the town attorney. That's come up multiple times.
Well, I mean, it's been raised, but I think that the, to the extent it's just really that. Cleaning up the, the assistant town attorney provision is what we. Yeah, I think we should look at because the town attorneys ask for that, so. Um, I'm limited to that is my opinion, but I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts, probably John.
I, I, I agree with, I agree with Brian. It's Pam Ikonos, I agree with, with, with Brian Caffarelli.
John, Matola.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should look at it. I, I thought originally when there was a discussion that I was in favor of maybe. Ridding the position of assistant town attorneys. But just thinking about it and hearing some, um, comments from other elected officials, I. I, I think there might be a role for an assistant town attorney to attend. Uh, meetings that maybe the town attorney can't always get to like RTM meetings, so. I, I, I just, I think we should discuss it. I, I can probably go either way on that, um. Um, so, and I, and I do again think that. Um, we should discuss whether the town attorney should be appointed for a term. And, 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 and that's not the takeaway from what Ms. Kupchak said earlier. With respect to appointing someone that, or any first select person trusts. I, I understand that completely. What I'm trying to get away from is, um, the impression whether it's fair or not that, um. Um, the town attorney only works for the, uh, first select person. And, um, and if you have that a, a, appointment for a set term or whatever, four years during the. First select person's, um, term of office, then the, the first select person just can't randomly. Get rid of the, uh, town attorney. I, I just think it gives it, it gives the public a little more confidence. But I don't wanna belabor that right now, but at least it's something we should talk about. I, I know it, I'm just gonna give it. In Bridgeport, the city attorney is appointed for a term. So it's the same concept, that's all I'm saying.
So they don't serve at the, the pleasure of the mayor? It's a co-terminist with the mayor?
They're, they're appointed for a term. And the only way that the city attorney could be, could be terminated is, is for cause. And I would have something like that in our charter also. Um, that, that's it. I'm not, I don't wanna take away from what the first select woman said. I think that's an important concept. That whoever is the first select person should be able to appoint his or her town attorney.
Yeah.
Uh, but let's try to, that, that's all.
Or what I'm trying to bring from, from a, a, a budget of time perspective is, um, this. I don't think this is a substantial due diligence issue, from what I'm hearing. This is a research and report. I'll give you a breakdown of how town attorneys and city attorneys' offices look throughout the state. The norm, I will tell you, because I just did this not too long ago, is they tend to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Bridgeport's a, a little different. Than most communities in terms of the corporation council, the town attorney. I also commend you to take a look at your charter and, and look at the responsibilities of the town attorney. Because there's not a, there's n- not a responsibility to the first so- select woman. It's a responsibility to the town and the Board of Selectmen actually, uh, um, while appointed by the first select, uh, woman. And, um, as a former corporation counsel myself, um, the, it, it's a difficult balancing act sometimes. Um, but most, most attorneys, most town attorneys, most corporation councils. Do look at the greater interest of the, of the public and really play a role. Most of the ones I've known, and I've known a lot over the forty-two years of practice, um, tend to be the one person in City Hall. Uh, most mayors aren't, aren't gonna wanna admit this publicly, who can tell the mayor you can't do something. And, and even if they're highly political, um, and so the perceptions could be problematic. Now, there's ways to deal with that. Um, you, you've got, one of the problems we have in Fairfield and, and, um. And I, I'm not on the commission, so people can criticize me for saying this, is you've got such a dispersed system. Of, of government with all the elected entities that you've got in town. Uh, it's hard to know who should have an independent ability to go out and hire a lawyer. You don't wanna have a bunch of, uh, a, a firing squad, um, in a circle, uh, in, in your community, so. I'll give you a breakdown, you'll take a look at it. I don't think, I don't think at this juncture, it's a huge issue, but I think. When you look at the chart, you'll be able to, and you look at the language that's in your charter and I'll give you. I'll give you powers clauses from other charters as well in terms of what the responsibilities are. Um, you'll find that you're relatively in the norm, uh, in that regard, and so.
Just one follow-up on that, Steve, of, you know, the topic of risk management and the town attorney's role in that risk management. Um, and you mentioned different boards and commissions wanting to go out and hire their own attorney for some topic. And I would be less interested in that event happening, but I would be interested in. Some of the significant boards that we have in town having a role in the discussion of some event going on in town. That is possibly gonna result in some risk to the town and having the town attorney have an obligation. To participate in that discussion and answer, rather than just not answering questions on. Whatever that topic might be and have those other boards, whether it be the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen. Being able to ask the questions and get a, an effective response.
Yeah. Well, look, I think the town attorney is generally responsible for the legal affairs of the community in terms of the broad risk questions. Uh, you have insurance to deal with that as well, but your town attorney needs to be conscious. And one of the things I'd wanna be careful about is not diluting the authority of the town attorney. Um, as I told, as I said when the first select one was on, that I fought really hard to make sure the Boards of Education. In spite of the arguments that they are independent entities, uh, understood that they were a city department. Um, unique city department with a very unique authority, but still a city department and, and, uh. And, and I think that's really important, so you don't, you wanna make sure that, um, that you don't dilute the authority. And when you do have the ability to hire an attorney, you still need to go to the town attorney. Uh, not necessarily, uh, if you're a legislative body, I, I just resolved a conflict in another community. Where the legislative body wanted to have independent ability to hire, uh, an attorney and I insisted on having a provision. That it would have to be following consultation with the town attorney to make sure there's no conflict. You don't wanna hire an attorney representing, um, one entity in the town that has lawsuits against the town. Uh, I think the town attorney should have some ability, uh, to chime in on anything like that. But I, I generally believe that the town attorney should have a full responsibility for the community. I'll give you the charts, you'll see it. Um, I think that you're, you'll find that you're relatively consistent. There are other ways to address the issue, but I'll, I'll lay some of those out for you so you can look at it.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
For me, yeah, for me, just it goes hand in hand with command and control, right, so.
Yeah, I'd like to really consider that port of ed issue that you brought up.
Yeah, and I have, yeah, uh, just a curious question for, uh, our process tonight. I'm just wondering if we have, uh, with sixteen pages yet to go, do we have a target, uh, end date for the, for the discussion tonight?
End time.
We could, let's figure that out right now. And we could, let's figure that out right now. How late do you guys wanna go or people uh the group?
John? Uh for me, I'd prefer not to go past nine or nine thirty.
Yeah.
I I I'm gonna have to bug off to a board of board of finance meeting in twenty minutes or so, cause I don't wanna miss that our last meeting as a group. So I'm gonna bug off at eight thirty. If that's too early, you guys can continue, but I would appreciate that if possible, but.
I I'm happy to entertain eight thirty, I'd rather not continue without the full group here. I I.
I'm sorry.
I agree.
Yep. No, don't apologize, it's no, I we've started early too, I mean, this is.
And let let me let me suggest, if we're we're gonna quit at eight thirty, one of the things, and I'll talk to the chair and vice chair about this and 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 the secretary to um, one of the things I might do to help facilitate the process is um after hearing some of the discussion and exchange we're in tonight, I might be able to reorganize this data. Um and and kind of lay out a proposed uh breakdown. I won't eliminate issues, I will not presume to eliminate issues, but maybe I'll try to categorize the issues um so that it might facilitate, um this is a lot, big mass of words here. Uh the more I, I I swear, I've never had a grid this this full. Um our cup runneth over with ideas, um.
Welcome to Fairfield.
Yeah.
And I went to college for four years in Fairfield, so I know Fairfield, I I know some of the bars in Fairfield, but that's.
So we're on track to be the best commission by far.
Oh no, you're a great commission. I love this commission, but the um the uh, so I I might suggest doing that because otherwise uh we can get bogged down. So why don't we continue to go through it and then I'll I'll work with the the leaders of the commission to try to come up with a a breakdown that will help you get through this process uh um uh if we can um in short order. So I just wanted to raise that possibility.
Good plan.
Alright, so the the, I'm sorry.
Can I just make one more minor, hopefully minor comment on this, on the specific question of the assistant town attorneys? Uh when you're looking up, see if there's anything special about that. I I would always assume that an attorney can always hire assistants, that the either they can always make a decision whether to bring in-house, out-house, all that. I don't know why this specific, we don't say that the chief of police can, you know, hire a captain. So I don't know if there's any specific unique thing about having assistant town attorneys, take a look at that.
I'm assuming, and Jim could correct me if I'm wrong, that at some point um you had an in-house.
We did.
In-house group, I could be wrong, and you might have had assistants that worked here. Uh in a lot of communities, that's the way it is. Right now, the bigger cities have larger inter- internal departments like a corporation.
Right, and my and my only point here is we take it out or pre- including anything. I don't think we are.
What we'll have is we'll have an ability for the for the um town attorney to hire such attorneys as necessary for the to protect the interests of the town.
And I think Jim had something to add to that, counselor.
I was just gonna say that I think that based on the comments from the the that you heard tonight as well as from the public, I think that it's a a conversation that should be had, and it should be inclusive of the assistant town attorneys and the town attorney. And uh I welcome the opportunity to opine on what I believe is the history of the assistant town attorneys as well as the town attorney, but uh tonight obviously is not the appropriate time for that. But uh I think it's a conversation that should be had. Uh as as John pointed out, there are many good points to be made on both sides, so. Yeah, I I I look forward to uh to explaining my uh my thoughts on on all subjects, but tonight's not tonight.
Perfect.
Right. So um after the the town attorney debate, there's, where terms of office are missing, we should put them in. Again, that's a that's a research and report, and again, when we finish going through boards and commissions and and departments, we'll know what those are and we'll put them in, pretty self-evident. Chief of staff should be designed and defined in the charter, serving at the pleasure of the first select woman. I'm gonna put that in the substantial due diligence category. That's a simple issue, but I think it's gonna come into the discussion as we look at the form of government, um right? I mean, you we could look at it independently, but I I thought I'd categorize it as something that would fall into the general discussion of the role of the first selectman, board of selectmen, et cetera. Um classified and union employees should be referenced in the charter, uh they should be, and that's a two, that's a report and research. I don't think it requires, um I can tell you shouldn't debate it, but I don't think it requires a lot of debate. I think it really is a a factual determination. Then the assistant town attorneys, I'm just going through the bullets, same thing. Um.
Steve, just a point of clarification on uh you mentioning chief of staff. Um and to make a distinction between the chief of staff and the chief administrative officer. Um and I wasn't sure you were not muddling the two of those together in that discussion.
I uh no, because I have, I didn't, CAO may have come up earlier, I don't remember that it came up earlier. It just came up tonight, but again, I would throw the CAO into the same category when we get to um uh when we get to the first selectman's office.
Okay.
It would be treated in the same way. Um you can treat them individually and say regardless of the former government, there should be a chief of staff, there should be a chief administrative officer. I was just assuming you would deal with it in a structural way as you look.
Yeah, I like that.
Um. The next bullet, the next page, fiscal officer, Department of Public Works, Human Resources, appointed for designated terms, removed only for cause, I don't know what this means. I think it the issue is we need, I I guess you wanna look at these, and that would probably be a substantial due diligence provision. I imagine you're looking at the issue of terms of office, who's appointing, things like that.
I think, yeah, and I think John suggested this, so I think that that's correct, Steve.
Right.
This is, Steve, this is a big one with the um the Board of Ed that I had mentioned with to you that the 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 way we have it set up right now, it's, there's no um for lack of a better way to say it, there's not, there's there the political parties are able to structure the system so that there's no choice. For example, in this particular election, each side of the aisle ran as many people could be elected and then they were automatically elected. Um so examining in a way to make sure that there is choice for the public, I guess, is the best way that I know how to summarize that.
Yeah, I think she did jump ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. That's what I thought we were on.
We're on fiscal officer, DPW, human resources.
Oh, I went straight down, sorry. My my fault, I was only listening with one ear, sorry.
That's okay.
So I think that that's part of the, and again, the the next bullet is the same, and then the whole issue of the cause standard is the same, so. Um so it's, you know, I think we'll be dealing with that in in a substantial way. But we're not gonna probably deal with individual, I know there's been talk about the public works directors, um.
John Reclam.
And qualifications. I assume we're not gonna deal with one that you wanna probably deal broadly with the issue of qualifications. Um unless unless some people feel strongly that that qualification should remain in the charter. Alright, so so I think these next, these three bullets will go there. Um. Then I guess the issue, this the one point four B two is the same issue as uh we raised a few minutes earlier. Again, I didn't restructure this, I wanted to honor everybody's individual contributions at this point. Um and that's why there's a a little duplication. Um but this is the issue of are these people unionized or not, so that again is a report issue. Uh the next one's a substantive issue in terms of adding the flood and erosion control board and alternates. It's a proposal that came in uh today, so I imagine that would be a substantial issue that you wanna look at at some point, if you're looking at boards and commissions, as we're looking at boards and commissions.
Yeah, it would go in that bit general group, so boards and commissions, they're not on its own, correct?
Got you.
I mean, unless, I don't wanna speak for everyone, it was just my thought. Um the silence is agreeing with my.
That's right.
Makes makes sense to put it there.
John.
John Matola.
I'm gonna just report that I'm bugging off right now because I have to get to my other meeting, so thank you, everyone, and we'll see you soon and I'll catch.
Let's all um, let's all take um, unless anyone has an objection, I think that this is a good time, if it's okay with everyone, to to adjourn.
I don't mean for you to stop.
No, I think you probably need a little bit of a comfort break before you go on to your next meeting too, it's a long night, so. I was gonna suggest that.
I I second that, cause I think at this stage, we all need to stay in sync, so.
Yeah, I agree.
But we also now know the process, so we can do our homework and review this in the next sessions, it'll be more efficient.
That's true, no, I appreciate that.
So so I'll try to do a breakdown for you, uh I'll talk to the chair and vice chair and 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 leadership secretary to uh give you a breakdown on uh um that might help us get through this process, because we can't take four nights to do this, folks. We we really need to, we really need to get through it, but I think I can um I can help facilitate it by reorganizing this a little bit and try to try to lay out priorities and categories where these things should fall.
Yeah, that we wanna.
You need to pull anybody else into that process, I'm happy to participate, so just let me know, I have time and and interest to work on whatever aspect of this you might need help on, so.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to distribute, I want, I'll talk to the uh town attorney about uh we we don't wanna do business by email, on the other hand, uh if council is drafting a document, uh it's probably not inappropriate for members of the commission to take a look at the document, but I'll talk to I'll talk to the town attorney, make sure I don't violate any local protocols.
Let me just ask, sorry, Steve, before John leaves, in terms of the just pure process for the next meeting, start time, do we wanna keep it at six thirty, do we wanna schedule in a break, it's probably gonna be a long meeting, and do we wanna have an ending time? Do we wanna agree on that now so that everyone can plan their night accordingly?
So if it's gonna be a long meeting, I don't, for this one time, we can start at six if you, if it works for everybody, totally up to everybody.
And then.
I'm good with with that for longer meetings.
And maybe take a break at seven thirty to like for fifteen minutes, just so we can, oh, how does it work, Steve, yeah?
Let no, let's keep, let's, because the the town clerk has a position that we can't do minutes at special meetings, if we change it to six o'clock, uh although we we we're gonna have a problem. So I would, I would schedule a s- special meeting at six o'clock, adjourn the meeting and go into our regular meeting at six thirty so we can do our minutes.
Okay.
You know, um so that uh you can start the meeting um to deal with that, that sole issue at six o'clock, if you wanna do it at six o'clock.
Alright, we'll do that, but so John Matola, you can, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Hi, John.
I personally, I do like uh having end target dates, cause it helps drive the the
Yeah.
the conversation, so I would, I think eight thirty, if we can target that, that would be perfect, or nine o'clock.
I think we've gotta get our work done and be willing to stay as long as we need to do to get it done. There there's this lot on here. Um and I I agree that we should have the goal of trying to get out by a certain time, but I don't wanna have to do four meetings on this, just like Steve said.
Okay, we'll see how far we can go then. Let's see how it plays out, let's try and start a little earlier and see how it plays out. We'll just check in kind of a couple hours in and see if we wanna take a five or ten minute break and then go on as long as we can, if that works for everyone.
I'm, that's good. I'm also not opposed to meeting in person.
Same with me.
Yep, same here.
I I think we could get a lot of work done if we're sitting in a room and a table altogether.
Agreed.
Okay.
With pizza would be nice.
Pepperoni.
Well, I don't know about the in-person meeting at this point, I'm I'm happy to do that as well, but I just need to check with uh the technical advisors as how how that would work, um the hybrid meeting, I understand there was some technic um technology challenge.
They're not quite ready for that yet.
Yeah, but you know, as soon as we are, we could certainly.
They're 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 close, so if you could look into it for the night, that'd be awesome.
Great.
Sure, yeah, I will definitely do that, but um until otherwise noticed, we'll we'll do it this way and we'll notice a special meeting for six o'clock and then go into our regular meeting at six thirty. And hopefully um be able to get through it all on the ninth, so. But I I do think now that we have a direction, and thank you so much, Steve, for that, um we can kind of bang this out, so. Anyone have any other comments before we sign off for the evening, procedurally or otherwise?
One thing I'll I'll do, if you don't mind, I know everybody wants.
Not at all, yeah.
When I put this together, what I may try to show you is how many meetings I think would be devoted to each of the topics as we go through it.
That would be very helpful.
With with, I won't give you names, because I don't have names yet, but with the kind of panels that I would have in the ones that I think require panels, so I'll try to really work uh to get that done before the ninth. Should be doable, and well in advance of the ninth, so you'll have it all in front of you in advance of that, alright?
I think we're getting some organization and this is forming well, so it's uh it's exciting, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Steve.
So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Removed, yeah.
Okay, alright. You too, yeah.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
See everyone on the ninth.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.